Good evening. Welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for June 3, 2014. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Can I get a roll call?
Carolyn Smart present.
Colin McNam present.
And Sulisio present. I'd also like to announce that this meeting is being taped recorded. Chairman's additions or deletions. Here we've got one, 3.17. For Ed Kukula, a few things. Some of those were in the packet, but some of them are new, right? Okay. I'd also like to add one, too, and that is review of correspondence that we were copied on from Carolyn Smart. What number should we make that?
You can do that as 318.
Thank you.
Unless you want to do it earlier.
Okay. We have a couple of minutes, so I'm going to jump down and see if we can do some quick things.
The approval of minutes.
Oh, yeah, right. Approval of meeting minutes.
I wasn't here on the 22nd, but I have no problem making the motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 22, 2014.
Second.
Are you supposed to if you weren't there?
I wasn't going to vote, but yeah.
It doesn't matter, they're just minutes. Why don't we just do it with just us, since it was just us? Colin?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes for April 22, 2014.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, okay. And for April 29?
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes for April 29, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go down to 34.
34. Review request from Ed Kukula, Highway Superintendent, to award a contract for milling to PJ Albert Inc. in the amount of $1.66 a square yard. That time again. Can I get a motion?
I would move that we approve the request from Ed Kukula, Highway Superintendent, to award a contract for milling to PJ Albert Inc. in the amount of $1.66 square yard.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
I did, I'm sorry, I did have one question. This isn't part of the extension, this is a new bid, right, Andy?
Yes, this is a new bid.
Suggestion, Andy? How about 3.8? No, I'm sorry, 3.7?
Yeah, that'd be quick.
Request for one-day liquor license for Ellen Eisner and the Townsend Congregational Church for wedding reception for June 7, 2014, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Townsend Congregational Church. Can I get a motion?
I would move that we approve the one-day liquor license for Ellen Eisner at the Townsend Congregational Church for wedding reception to be held on June 7, 2014, with serving hours from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, what do we got for time?
Do you want to quickly do 3.8, because it's another one?
3.8.
Wait one minute.
Review requests for one-day liquor license for Terry Roy and the VFW Post 6538 for a baby shower to be held June 14, 2014, 12 to 4 p.m.
I would move that we approve the one-day liquor license request for Terry Roy to be held at the VFW Post 6538 for a baby shower to be held on June 14, 2014, from noon time to 4 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We still have time to do 3.9.
Sign these anyway, so. And, do I have a cheat sheet?
Oh, sorry.
That's for when you can't remember these things. Got to make sure you got a cheat sheet.
Carolyn has the legal ad in front of her.
Do we need to read that? Yes. Okay, so I'd like to announce the hearing, 7:05, public hearing.
Sign this.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Sorry. Colin's keeping me honest here.
And this one, too.
He's still keeping me honest.
There you go.
Okay. You're going to have to remind me which ones we did, too. So I'd like to open the hearing, 7:05, public hearing on petition of Unitil and Verizon to install a utility pole on Bayberry Hill Road approximately 160 feet east of the intersection of New Fitchburg Road.
Okay, we have a sign-in sheet being circulated, so if anyone wants to sign it. The legal notices this fall, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 3, 2014, at 7:05 p.m. in the Selectmen's Chambers, 272 Main Street, Townsend, Mass. The purpose of this hearing is to consider the petition of Unitil and Verizon, New England Inc., companies duly incorporated, respectively, for the transmission of electricity for lighting, heating, and power, respectively, ask permission to construct and use a line for such transmission with the poles and other fixtures necessary to sustain and protect its wires upon and along the public ways in the town as follows. Bayberry Hill Road, approximately 160 feet east of the intersection of New Fitchburg Road, installing one pole. And to this end, your Honorable Board is hereby requested, after due notice and hearing as provided by law, to grant to your petitioner and successors and signs a location for such line agreeably to the provisions of Chapter 166 of the general laws and of all acts and amendment thereof, to grant said companies their respective successor and size, joint or identical location, for such lines, the poles erected thereon, to be owned and used by them in common. Also for permission to place and maintain underground unilateral manholes, handholds, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as it may desire for distributing purposes, as in Article 11, Section 22, Clause 62 of Section 34 of Chapter 262 of the Town and Townsend Bylaws.
And Jim D. from Unitil is here.
Do you want me to speak from here, or do you want me to come down from here? No, you can speak from here.
Okay. Yeah, we're looking to get permission to install one pole on Bayberry Hill Road across from 203 Bayberry Hill Road. And the reason for that is the span between the two poles on that section is 266 feet. So we're going to put one right in the middle so that, to even the spans out, because right now Verizon is real low going across the road there, and they've got a rope holding it into it from a tree holding it up in the air, so it's badly needed to get the wires up high so that vehicles don't hit it. That's about it, just amidst being pulled to get our wires up higher.
Okay. And abuddos have all been notified?
Yes.
And that was like a review of the application, right? Okay. Do we have anybody in support?
John DeAngelo, 203 Bayberry Hill Road. Pole is directly across from the house. We've been trying, we bought that house in 1979. We've been trying for that period of time to get Verizon to take their telephone lines off the tree and get them on the pole that was extended, that belonged on. Pole finally fell over this winter, so they were forced into doing it. And I want to thank you, Nutella, for rapid response and getting it out there.
Great. Anyone else? A lot of objections. Questions?
I have no questions.
Okay. We need a motion.
The only thing I do want to add is if it's okay with both my colleagues, if we voted contingent upon a referral hearing from Ed Kukula, we haven't heard from him yet, and I just want to make sure he didn't have any issues with the placement of the pole. I'm sure he doesn't, but...
I think that would be fine.
Okay.
That would be fine.
That's fine.
Okay. Well, then I would move to approve the petition of Unitil and Verizon to install a utility pole on Bayberry Hill Road, approximately 160 feet east of the intersection of New Fitchburg Road.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other questions? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lots of places.
So we can close that hearing?
Yes.
Be with you in a moment. Glad we made a name to the Capitol today. I'll start with Burgess. Is this right on?
No, I see the thing.
Engineer.
Cyrus, right?
Yeah. From Kate Patty's day. So you want mine here as well? Just have to make sure I'm not signing my way here, too.
It's the power of attorney.
You won't have to kill any time for the next one. You won't have to kill any time waiting for the next one.
Yeah. Signatures. Okay. 2.2, we have another public hearing, petition of Unitil and Verizon to install a utility pole on Burgess Road, approximately 1780 feet north of the intersection of Dudley Road. We get the hearing.
The legal notice, I do. The Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 3, 2014, at 7:10 p.m. in the Selectmen's Chamber, 272 Main Street, Townsend, Mass. The purpose of this hearing is to consider the petition of Fitchburg Gas and Electric Light Company, a company incorporated under the laws of the Commonwealth for transmission of electricity for lighting, heating, power, respectively, ask permission to construct and use a line for such transmission with the poles and other fixtures necessary to sustain and protect its wires upon and along the public ways in said towns and as follows. Burgess Road, approximately 1,780 feet north of Dudley Road, installing two new sole-owned electric poles. And to this end, your Honorable Board is hereby requested, after due notice and public hearing as provided by law, to grant to your petitioner and its successors and assigns a location for such line agreeably to the provisions of Chapter 166 of the general laws and all acts and amendment thereof. Also for permission to place and maintain underground lateral manholes, handholds, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as it may desire for distributing purposes. It is suggested that the pole be located substantially as shown on map, on a plan filed herein within marked Fitchburg Gas and Electric Light Company, proposed pole locations in Townsend Plan Number 600-L dated 4/21/14.
Thank you.
Again, I'm Jim D. with Unitil, and we're looking to get permission to install two poles at the very end of Burgess Road to extend our lines to a proposed building by the resident on Burgess Road. So approximately, we'll go another 180 feet for the first pole, and then another 180 feet to the second pole. And it's just going to be sole-owned electric, because Verizon at this point is going to be a joint owner. Basically, to serve a proposed bond at the very end of Burgess Road.
And, thank you. Everyone, all the abuddos have been notified. Anyone here in support of this? Mr. Chanel?
I'll speak in support. I did send the board a limited opposition to this, and the opposition was not based on the placement of the poles or the actual installation itself, it was based on the terminology of the application along the public way. The end of this road has been, the property that John's building, the barn on, has been a subject of a number of hearings in town over the last 15 or 20 years, the last of which was culminated in 2003 when the prior one tried to apply through Laura Schiffern for a building permit, which Rich Hanks denied based on the fact that the road had been abandoned in 1889, actually before my house, by official town meeting. And they denied it based on the lack of frontage. It went to the zoning board when I was a member, I recused myself, and upheld the denial at that point. Dan Murphy also certified that the annual town meeting vote in 1889 was legitimate and that the road had been abandoned. So I just wanted to, my limited objection was just based on the terminology of the "along the public way," because at that point it's not a public way. It's a private way. To the extent that Unitil needs Board of Selectmen's approval to install that, I have no objection at all. And that was my limited objection, just basically terminology. So if you do approve the application, we just ask for a qualifier, say, to the extent necessary, as it is a private way, that you approve the application of Unitil to do what they want to do.
Does that sound reasonable? Jim? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, it sounds reasonable. I thought it was a town, you know, property going all the way to the end.
Is that an issue for your company?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Some of the older maps in town do show it as a paper road, because it goes all the way back to, there's a market hill, 500 Hill, but it was abandoned, you know, 150 years ago. It's been contested over a number of years, but, I mean, all the boards, the zoning enforcement officer, the zoning board, the planning board have all upheld the fact that it's a banned road.
So just to keep things clean, is what you're suggesting?
Exactly, I just didn't want to be really involved.
So the land owns it own to the middle of that road, is that what?
Exactly. As an operation of...
That's not correct.
No, that's incorrect. We own to the stone wall, and I have my deed with it.
Every deed on Burgess Road, from the point of abandonment upward, indicates to the stone wall on the front of the property.
I have a copy of my deed.
So they don't own, they would have to go and do something legal, apparently, I'm not sure what they call it, but no one has done that. And so while it's abandoned, in my opinion, it's still owned by the town. My deed up there says to the stone wall only, not to the center of the road.
Help me understand, are you objecting to this point?
No, I'm the one that...
Okay. So what's the issue with putting, wording it the way that Mr. Chanel suggested? Does that sound...
I have no problem with it.
Okay.
I don't want to build a house. I want to put up a bond.
Be nice to have electricity at Marne.
Yeah, it would be kind of handy.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, John Darling and I, they came over to my house this time, we talked about it, there's no issues. It was just a clarification, but to answer the question, it's by operation of law, you would have to file a motion with the land court to clear titles, what John's... And that hasn't been done, and I agree with that, but it's still an abandoned road. That's all.
So Jim, that's okay for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
As long as it's okay for everybody. All right. Then just...
If it's an abandoned road and the deed will eventually be reflected, if you ever went to sell or you redid it, it would be reflected that road from, that road would belong to you.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
If we discontinued the road, eventually your deed would reflect that part of the discontinuance as your property, even though it's not done yet. Like you said, you have to take it to land court. Why would we need to approve this application exactly? Because it would be located on private property.
Great question. I don't know.
Do you know, Jim?
But nobody owns that land. The town still owns that land, I imagine?
We don't own it. Once it's, we have two different types of discontinuance. We have discontinuance for maintenance, which means we still own it, but we're not maintaining it anymore. And then by the looks of what Dan had, we had voted in 1882, 1882, yeah. We just continued it completely, so then whoever owns property on each side of the road, they own to the middle of it. So just because it's not reflected in his deed yet doesn't mean he's not the proper owner of that, of that road.
And all those houses, even Chanel's, and the town is maintaining them. It was from Wornums, because...
It was abandoned from, across the street from my residence, 20 Burgess Road, where Dana Shattuck was between us. It was abandoned somewhere in there, but there's been, Mr. Chanel's house has been put up, Steve's house, the house my son lives in on our side, has been put up.
Chris's house.
That, yeah, the property that's currently in bank foreclosure. And then there's one other home.
About five or six homes already on the road there, supposedly was in the...
That had been built on the abandoned road, with, you know, no problem.
So if you built on this, it maybe won't be abandoned anymore, or just...
Well, it's agriculture.
That's the point. David?
Over the years, the, in the zoning board, let me go back a little bit in history. In 2003, the application through Laura Schiffern, John Barrett represented the builder, the proposed builders, and the appeal of the zoning board, and he did a very detailed research in some part of its land use records. And even he acknowledges that the abandonment has been encroached over the period of the last 30 to 40 years. And that's true. John's been there as long as the spokesman and all the voice, and he knows that stuff. But my concern was just to make it stop. It hasn't, nothing's been happening since Stephen's house was built 20 years ago, thereabouts. We're getting beyond the intent of my limited objection, it's just based on the terminology of the application. I don't think, to answer Carolyn's concern, when a road is abandoned, by operation of the land on each side of Burgess, that's just by statute. But in order to clear that, you have to file a petition with the land court, and that's never been done in the 150 years since. So I don't know anybody who would do it. Right?
So there would be nothing wrong with just approving the application and dropping the public way from the actual...
Well, that's Jim. I didn't want to step on his toes as to write his company, because I just wanted the qualifier on it, that's all.
Right. Well, we already have poles on an abandoned road.
Yeah. I would just say, to the extent necessary, you approve the application, that's all. That would be a good qualifier.
Okay. It'll be part of the record as well, so.
Okay, then. So anyone else have anything to say, objections, or... Okay.
Okay, I would move to approve the petition, petition, actually, this isn't Unitil and Verizon, is it? I'm sorry. Just Fitchburg Gas and Electric. I would move to approve the petition of Fitchburg Gas and Electric Light Company to install utility pole on Burgess Road, approximately 1,780 feet north of the intersection of Dudley Road.
Second.
To whatever extent necessary?
That's what I was requesting, but...
Right.
To the extent necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Hearing is closed.
So, and on that one, we did have a letter from Ed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Carol.
Thanks.
Make them go through a lot of paperwork. 2.2 is done.
While we're waiting for those to be signed, item 315 is a borrowing that we're doing for some road repairs. Town Clerk Kathy Spofford has to witness that and sign the paperwork, so maybe it would be helpful to her to take that out of order, do that either before or do that right after 3.1.
Sure.
So she doesn't have to hang around for however long it would take us to get there.
I'll just get down to that one now. And that was 3.15. I just want to give Carolyn a second.
Did Ed get his copy, Andy?
Oh.
Whole hearing petition? So it looks like we have Ed's copy.
Yes.
The town clerk, like theirs.
3.15, review and sign bond anticipation note documents for the $150,000 borrowing for road improvements.
So this is one of the items that was approved at town meeting, borrowing for road repairs. We went out to, we actually got a, what's known as a state house note, and came in at an interest rate of 0.55 percent, so the interest for the $150,000 will be a little, will be $426, so. So it would be a motion to sign the documents.
Can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, I just had a question. I know that, I talked to Kate, we appropriated $9,000 for short-term borrowing. Are we going to be, the only question I had, and Kim wasn't to her because she hadn't received anything from the schools, is on that septic system. I wasn't sure if we were going to be getting a bill for an interest payment on that as well, or if that's just going to be part of an assessment for it to be approved next year. I was a little worried about the appropriation amount with all the borrowing.
Yeah, that would come through as a part of our assessment, the way that the Spalding Roof Project has been.
Have you heard from the school whether we're going to have a...
I haven't heard when the, I'm assuming it's not going to be until fiscal '16, since they didn't include anything in '15.
And this is, and they're just selling our note, the state house note, Eastern Bank's going to be buying it?
Correct.
Six months? Okay, I would, I would move to, I would move to approve the bond in the amount of $150,000 with Eastern Bank.
Second.
So to approve and sign, right?
Approve and sign.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Actually, that would be a ban, I'm sorry.
So we're moving to sign the note, right? So we're moving to sign the note, right? Okay. You okay with that, Colin?
Second.
Okay. Uh, been moved and seconded? Any other questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Kathy, you need to-
Wow.
What's that?
What are you doing, Chris?
Come on, leave. I'm assuming, yeah?
Yeah.
I know. How much do I have for some?
No, I know.
You'd lost a few taps, huh?
I don't know, but they're probably making some money. Okay, so you saw me. I can see him.
Yeah. I have another question.
Yeah, it is.
Are we gonna be going over bond anticipation notes for the capital items that were approved?
Uh, we haven't decided yet if it'll be a ban or just to go right out to market.
We go right out to market? Why are we doing a ban with this one? Because we'd have to roll the soul for any number, right?
Right. We needed to get this money in place before the end of the current fiscal year, so that we could combine it with the, uh, the pothole repair money that we received.
Okay. So are we intending to maybe roll this into the general obligation bond that we go out for?
We may. We'll decide, um, down the road as, as we see how that unfolds, what makes the most sense.
Yeah, we should probably have a discussion on that.
When the time comes, we'll talk about it. Okay, going back up to three point one. Review correspondence from Assistant Town Clerk Susan Funioli requesting a waiver for the personnel policies and procedures manual.
Do you want me to talk about it, or do you want to ask?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Um, so there's a, a letter in the packet from Sue Funioli regarding, uh, the application of the, of the personnel rules, um, in the, in the, uh, transition after she relinquished her elected position as, uh, town clerk and began her new position as the assistant clerk. There was a, uh, a break in service of, of greater than a week. Under the personnel rules, uh, it says that any, any break other than holiday or vacation or sick time or something like that, in excess of a week constitutes a break in service. And you don't accumulate credit, so you come back, essentially, in her case, um, comes back as a, as a new employee without the benefit of the, uh, of the time that she's served previously. Um, and she's, she's asking for a waiver of that. We, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago. The personnel rules are quite clear on the issue. There is not a provision for a waiver. Frankly, I think there should be. I think, um, you can never anticipate all of the quirky things that can come up over time, uh, when you're, when you're writing a bylaw or a set of regulations. However, there is no provision in there to, uh, to grant a waiver. I wasn't, uh, I'm not authorized as the town administrator to grant one, um, but she, uh, she's asking the board for, uh, some considerations, right?
So I guess the question is, are we authorized?
Which is it? Fairly good question.
Well-
Carol?
These are definitions, and one of the, the reasons that we wrote this particular definition during two thousand and four is because we had some people out on long-term unpaid leave. And we did not want them accumulating, and we didn't think it was right for them to accumulate your one point two five, sick days each month in your vacation time while you are out on unpaid leave. So it doesn't just apply to people that maybe left and come back, but it applied to, um, accumulating credits, you know, for your, for your sick time. Um, to read it as a definitive rule, I mean, I would, I would definitely disagree. These were lit, written in two thousand and four, and as you know, um, the elected official signed off on it, but we don't have a bylaw regarding this. So this is a policy. It's not, it's not the law.
Andy, is there any precedent for something like this?
Would it be setting one?
Yeah, would it be, yeah, exactly. Would it be setting one?
Um, well, it depends on what side of the argument you wanna, you wanna argue from. Um, I'm not aware of, um, of regula, of the policies being waived in the past. It may, I, and I, I believe Carolyn, when she says that it was written for a specific, with a specific goal in mind, but it's not what it says, so, um, you know, whether, whether it sets a precedent or not, um, I guess you would, I would expect the board would, would act based on the, on the circumstances in front of it and the merits of the request. And the next one that comes along, you would, whatever board is in place at that time, would, um, would react accordingly.
Kathy?
I think what makes this really unique is the fact she's going from being an elected official after being an employee for nine years, an elected official for six, and then back to being an employee. So for this to happen again, I think will be very, very unlikely. Um, she's put in, it'll be fifteen years in August that she's been an employee here in the town. And to deprive her of vacation that she's accrued over that time, you know, the buildup, um, I just think she should be allowed to, to continue on with her vacation time. Not that she's asking to get paid for a vacation time she didn't take as a town clerk or anything, but just to keep on with the weeks that she has accrued. And she's not asking for the sick time. It's, it's more the probationary period, the six-month probationary period. She's been an employee for fifteen, almost fifteen years. Um, and then the vacation time.
David, you had a question?
It's a good question. I want to go back to what Carolyn said. This is before I got on the board, right before. It was a policy signed by the selectman, is that?
Signed by the selectmen and the elected officials, um, you probably-
Personnel policy.
It's personnel policy.
Yeah. And we passed the bylaw in two thousand and seven. You probably remembers this discussion saying, when the majority signs off, it applies to the whole.
Everything, yeah.
We haven't approved any policy.
Well, one thing, if it was a bylaw and it didn't explicitly give the board or selectman authority to waive it, Andy's right, you would, you'd be done. That's it. But if it's a policy, the selectman does have the, the administrative authority to waive it if they choose. But being careful to create a precedent, as Sue was saying, but if it's a case-by-case basis, fifteen-year-long employee, not, you know, long, but fifteen-year-long employee who has run in a lot of service over several iterations of public service and private service and back and forth, it's a very special, unique situation. It would seem that, and the, the break in service, you're talking like a week to two weeks, seems very small. And I, I, I agree with Andy that he can't do it on his own, but if the selectman can say, you know, looking at, looking at the totality of the circumstance, say, yeah, this is what we have, this is an employee with fifteen years of service through all these different titles, it's not that big a debarcation from the policy itself, and you have the authority to do it. And that's just, I was only coming from my telephone calls, but I thought this would be interesting that I get to. So I would, that's, I mean, just as a recommendation.
Stick around, you never know what's gonna happen.
Um, I, I guess my, my feeling on it is, um, on, on one hand, whenever we've tried to look at things a little bit more liberally, we've often been criticized for that, for not sticking to the letter of the law, or the way that it's written. So my tendency because of that would be to say, you know what? It says a week. Um, a week went by, I'm gonna stick with what it says. And then we don't run into precedent issues at all. Um, and to go the other way would mean potentially, well, setting a precedent, but what that means is that the next time something comes up, this board, be it the three of us or whomever, we're kind of giving that next discussion, um, a little bit of a disadvantage. We're putting the, the board that's gonna have to make that decision for somebody else, um, or potentially for someone else, um, a, a little bit more difficult, you know? Um, and, and I, I guess that's, that's my, my biggest concern with it. May I ask another question, though? Um, how much time are we talking about?
From the time she left her position to the time she was hired, it was not-
No, no, I mean, the vacation itself. All she's asking for is, is-
Um, she, four weeks, uh, a year.
Okay.
Is what she, she gets per year.
And if that vacation time is not used and she chose to leave her position?
She would get paid for it.
She would get paid for it.
Sure. And I think, I mean, if you wanted to stretch it even further, as a compromise, I don't know if you could do this even, as an elected official, you don't accrue vacation time. You can work the hours as needed, that you need to work, and take off whatever time you want. Sue, you know, has always gone with what she, for the amount of year she's been here, that's how many weeks she gets, she takes, if she takes that. Um, so if you even discounted the fact that the six years, she would have been here nine years, and she would get three weeks vacation, and arguably, she'd be here ten, so it'd be back to four weeks, but just, just a thought too.
That would be a compromise.
Right.
And Sue, um, I kind of, I read this, I mean, I know the intent behind it, so maybe I'm reading something into it that, that others aren't, but any other absence of more than one week will constitute a break in service, and such absence will not accumulate service credits. I agree, she shouldn't be earning anything for the week and a half she was in an employee, but I don't think it-
Oh, no, I don't mean that. I, I didn't mean that. I'm saying that what I heard from you was there were other things behind the wording. Okay? So, so there's extending circumstances at the time it was written that you were trying to build in when this policy was written. And I understand that you were involved in that. Um, but at the same time, I, I really, it's important to me that everyone understand that this board has continuously gotten criticism for not sticking to the letter of the wording. We have several issues like that happening right now. And I'm just calling that out because now I'm hearing the reversal, okay? We can't, we can't look at something and depending on how we feel about it sway us one way or the other. Either we're gonna go to the letter of, of what's written, or we're not. So I'm bringing that up as a point. That's, I'm just bringing that up as a point. Now, that being said, personally, I don't have a problem with giving her the three weeks.
I don't either.
I don't have a problem with giving her the three weeks.
Oh, the three, oh, the compromise?
The, the compromise.
You know, the thing is, is that, the only comment I have on that is that considering it's, it'd be back to four weeks in three months, two months, I just, I, I, it doesn't matter who it is, it's an employee who's been with the town for fifteen years, so I have no problem with waiving it.
For the full?
For the, for just, for the full amount.
Okay.
I just want to clarify, is she, are you looking for back vacation, just something going forward?
Going forward.
Yeah. So it's just looking going forward, but you know, you talked about the board, and you know me, when I was on the, I was, I was a stickler, it was a black and white most of times.
There are a few sticklers around.
But you also look at it and say, you have the authority to do that, and the person who's making the application to you has the burden to move the date. So if they, if they provide compelling enough evidence that makes you, that convinces you to accept it, then you do it. And it's not like-
And, and I'm fine with that.
Yeah, it's not like you're a burden on the next board.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. The only reason that I brought up the, the other is because we have received criticism for, for it in the past.
That's what you guys get to see bucks for, you know?
Yes, that's right. Yes, how many years is it now? Haven't you collected?
They owe me five. I'm looking for my five dollars.
Yeah, you're still looking for your five, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna pay it at the end, so you might-
Yes, he did. It's in a frame, he can't even open it.
Break in a, break in case of emergency.
Yes.
So just for clarification, so that our treasurer will know how to track it, and Kathy will know how to track it, we're honoring Sue's time as the assistant town clerk, but not her time as the elected official for purposes of vacation and longevity?
Well, we haven't made, we haven't made a motion yet.
Well, I know, but that's what we're, we're talking about, the compromise on, is that, I just want to make sure we're on this.
Um, Kathy suggested that for compromise. I thought that sounded fine. Colin saying he wouldn't, it, it's fine with him if he doesn't do the compromise.
Either way, it doesn't, the compromise or the fifteen years does not matter, I mean, whatever.
So that's why I guess I'm asking, what- If, if you, if, if someone would like to make a motion to, to waive it, um, and allow her to accrue her vacation based on fifteen years?
Fifteen years.
Then if I'm still on the board, I'd be willing to argue the next one on its own merit as well. Yes?
Yeah, um, I guess my question is, how are you gonna handle this for employees who in the past haven't had a chance to use their vacation time, had no fault of their own? Uh, those people then come forth to get their backbated, they're just due?
No.
Yeah. Yeah?
No. And, and I, in the business world, if you have vacation time and you don't use it, it's as if you're saying to your employer, no, that's okay. Here, take the check. Okay? You're given vacation time, you're given PTO, whatever you want to call it, because that's a benefit. And you're not, using that benefit is totally up to you.
So how about if you're the only full-time employee in the department?
You still, you still have a right to take your vacation time, and you should.
All right.
Okay. So can I get a motion?
Well, you can in a second. I just want to be sure that we're clear on what we're voting, because we have three different.
We're voting for what they asked for, what Susan asked for.
So that would make her a 15-year employee. We're not, we're only discussing vacation.
For vacation.
For vacation.
For vacation purposes only.
That's what I want to be clear on.
Yes.
Okay. So I would move that we agree to allow Sue for vacation purposes only for 15 years, since her start date in 1999. And I don't know what the whole date is.
August 30th.
For her vacation.
August 30th, 1999, for vacation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Everybody all set? You're clear on that?
What was the August?
August 30th.
30th. I'm sorry, what year?
1999.
Sounds like so long ago.
I know. It's more than it was born.
She commented that it was longer than Colin was born.
Not quite.
Time flies. All set?
Okay, yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
3.2 Sustainable Water Management Initiative. You draft comment letter on proposed amendments to the Water Management Act.
So based, based on the conversation that we had at the meeting two weeks ago, put together a comment letter to the DEP from the board outlining the concerns that were addressed by Paul and by the consultant, whose name I've already forgotten, who was here at the last, the last meeting. And if it's acceptable to the board and says what you want it to say, and doesn't say what you don't want it to say, then we can, if you're okay with it, you can sign it and we can send it off.
Comments, questions?
I read it. I thought it was well-written. I asked Paul, and he supported it.
I just, I just have one request. Could we copy Senator Flanagan and Representative Harrington, please?
We actually added that.
Thank you.
We didn't change the body of the document, but Paul told me today to change the recipient of the letter. So instead of it being Kathleen Baskin, it would be Dwayne Lavangie of DEP. And we also added the senator and the representative.
Right. Then I would be glad to sign it. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I would move to approve and sign the letter to, what was the DEP?
Dwayne Lavangie.
Dwayne Lavangie of DEP. The Sustainable Water Management Initiative comments on the draft regulations.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carolyn, you eye on that?
Aye, I did. I'm sorry.
Thank you for that, Andy.
You're welcome.
3.3 Water Department Collections. Continued discussion of the recommendations of the independent auditors and Department of Revenue Financial Management Review to transfer collections to the town collector and potential costs associated with that move. Andy?
So I don't have anything formal to submit to the board. A couple of questions came up at the meeting two weeks ago from Water Commissioner Nellis Busler and others regarding the cost of, essentially, what would the chargeback be from the town to the water department? And there are a number of, there are a number of things at play, so I'm not at a point where I, where I'm comfortable providing even, even a ballpark estimate. As we talked about when we were going through the budget, we're, we put some additional funds into the treasurer and collector's office to add some staff there. What we, what we've discovered or determined over the last eight months or so is that that department really was understaffed for the amount of work going on down there. It's made a little bit more complex now, or a little bit more challenging, because we have two part-time people sharing what previously had been a single full-time treasurer, collector. So we, we have some issues with, with coverage at the desk. So we wanted to, to build in some hours to provide coverage and cross-training for the various elements that go on down there. That will be kicking in on July 1. So that will help us both in the coverage and the other, the other thing at play is we've got the lockbox coming in at the next billing cycle. We don't know yet exactly how that's going to play out. The estimate is that at the beginning, a quarter of the people will take advantage of the lockbox, so that's a quarter less, 25% less foot traffic or mail traffic that staff has to handle downstairs. But, you know, 25 is an estimate from the banks. It could be less for us, it could be more for us. So, so with those two things in mind, I think it makes sense to, to not rush into, into this change. As I said at the meeting two weeks ago, it's not something that has to happen immediately. We don't have to do it this week or next month, or at the beginning of the year, or something like that. I would say that it would make, it would make sense to wait six months or so, see how the lockbox goes. The water department's also looking at lockbox. I think they should be encouraged to go in that direction as well. That would cut down on, on the, on the volume that they would be handling. And when it finally comes over here, presuming it comes over here, would cut down on the volume that, that the collector staff would have to manage. We can see what, what our staffing needs are here at that time. I don't think we're going to need to add additional staffing, but I, but I can't commit to that at this time. And then the other, the, in terms of the, the chargebacks, we can look at that as, as we go into this. The agreement that exists between the finance committee, selectmen, and the water commissioners dates back to 1992, and it's never been, it's never been updated since it was adopted. And a lot has changed. It really just, it's a chargeback for clearly identifiable costs. What I'd like to do is to also use the time to look at what some of the sort of soft costs are, or other costs are, that are not, not being addressed in the agreement. And, and sort of tackle that all at the, at the same time. But to, to shorten it up, I think implementation of the lockbox, both here and at the, at the water department, is, is really kind of paramount in, in the short term to, to get moving in the right direction.
Can I ask a question? When would the lockbox be happening with the water bills? In time for the next billing cycle? Is that the plan? Do you know?
Probably not, right, Paul?
Well, I only have one commissioner here today, so we don't have a quorum. Just my brief conversation with, with Andy. You know, the intent is obviously to comply with the auditors and D O R. As far as the implementation, actual implementing of the program, again, he mentioned he's looking at the water department at least January 1st. Yeah, I'm sure we can discuss the details of that. Just a question, I've been out of town a couple of years now, so I don't remember, do the tax collector submit postage envelopes, I mean, you know, payment envelopes with the tax bills?
That will, for the last few years, that has not been the case. They just send the bill. With the next round of bills, there will be two envelopes. We still do twice-a-year mailings of the tax bills. But there'll be two envelopes included.
My reason for asking is, the, the concern is the, the cut down on the foot traffic. You know, we, we submit payment envelopes with our bills, so if, if the address to send the bill, who to send the bill to is there, I think the, you know, the anticipation that more will, more people participate in the program is greater.
Yeah.
Would further cut down the foot traffic as well.
Yeah, the only reason I was asking was, I, I just want to make sure that before the next audit begins, we've got this resolved.
Yeah, we won't have it resolved because the, the audit will be, the audit for fiscal 14 will be starting sometime this, probably late summer or something like that. However, if we're, we can show to the auditors that we're making progress in the right direction if there's, you know, if there's an agreement on all parties to move towards lockbox initially and transferring water collection. At some point, we do, we do need a commitment from the water commission.
So from my perspective, I think it's important that when the auditors do come in, and that would be August or so.
Probably, yeah.
That we have a plan in writing to be able to respond. Okay? These, the, these are the things that, that we have discussed. These are the things that we are doing. We are going to be able to evaluate the, how many people are going to use the lockbox service. We, it gives us time to evaluate it, both for the water and for the other, and to better estimate what we need, which is basically what I heard you say, okay? But I think it's important that we, as a town, have that, and maybe something, a document from the board of selectmen in conjunction with the water, the water commissioners, is my thought.
Okay.
Any other thoughts?
I think that would be very helpful for the auditors.
Well, then it becomes, then it's formal. It's formal. We're not just talking about it, this is, this is happening, and this is the first step to evaluating it.
Right.
Well, we've been talking about this for a long time, so.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to know.
If it's, something's in place by the time the auditors start, I think, I'm satisfied with that.
Yeah, and I don't mind if it actually hasn't been implemented yet, but the plan should be laid out.
Yep.
Okay?
I do have one other question.
Paul?
And could be ironed out later or, or at some point. And on the other group discussion with Andy, when it's decided on what the cost, the chargeback would be, if it's deemed that it's more expensive than the cost that I got, say, from Houston Bank, I know it would be more advantageous if, like you said, Andy, if somebody put their tax bill in with their water bill in the same envelope, then it's, you know, it's more administration time to designate that payment. But cost-wise, would it be, we could implement, I mean, use a different bank as a lockbox if the cost is.
And I think those are the things that you guys are going to work out, okay? I don't need to be in the details. We don't need to be in those details, okay? You guys work them out. What I want to see is a written plan that both the water commission and us can sign off on, so that the auditors can see that we are making progress.
Okay.
Okay? Does that make sense?
Indeed.
Okay. Anything else? So that takes care of that one. 3.5 Review Request From Ed Pukala, Highway Superintendent For Transfer And Appropriations In The Amount Of $30,000. Andy?
This is a, we have an interesting situation that, that has developed with respect to the, the street sweeper. The town meeting approved the purchase of a new street sweeper at the town meeting a month ago. That was $185,000, give or take. The town meeting also approved the purchase of what we call a clamshell, a catch basin cleaner. It looks, you know, it's kind of, kind of operates like the claw in, in the Toy Story movies, and used to clean the junk out of the sumps in the catch basins. There is a, there is a new type of, of street sweeper now that has a, a built-in vacuum that can be used as, for a multiple, multitude of purposes, not the least of which is as a catch basin cleaner. To get that add-on to the sweeper is an additional $30,000. We had appropriated $50,000 for the clamshell. So what Ed would like to do is to buy the, the combination unit, which is 30,000, which is 30,000 more than, than we appropriated for the sweeper, but will save us 20,000 overall. He proposed to, he's asking for this transfer to pay for the first piece of that out of, as sort of a lease-to-own, which would cover the, the catch basin vacuum, and then the rest of the 185,000 for the sweeper would still be part of that, of that borrowing. So it's a, it's a little bit, we couldn't increase the amount of the, or move money around within the capital appropriation, because that's set by the town meeting. But we often co-mingle capital funds with, or, or complement capital funds with operating funds. And so that's what he's, he's trying to do here. We've talked about it with, with Kim fail as a town accountant, and from a procedural standpoint or a legal standpoint, there's no issues with it. So we'd like to, if the board is, is comfortable with it, like to move in this direction again. It'll save us 20,000 over the total purchase of the two pieces of equipment that we were going to buy.
Questions?
Yeah. Okay, so this $30,000 piece, it's not separate from the street sweeper?
It's part of the sweeper, yeah.
So if our capital plan is authorized for July 1st, how can we do, I'm just confused on the procedure part of it, how can we do a municipal transfer for funds that are actually going to go back into the general fund June 30th unless?
What the, what the company has, has agreed to let us do is to pay 30,000 in current year funds as a sort of down payment or, or lease payment, with the remainder to come out of the, out of the capital borrowing that's coming up after July 1.
Yeah, okay, I can understand that. I think I said we're going.
It's like a rent with an option to buy.
So when are we going to be going out to borrow for the 185? We're going to get a ban from the state?
That'll be probably over the summer.
Is this just going to be set up on payments? We're purchasing it, right?
We're going to do a purchase, yeah. So it'll, it'll sort of end up as a, as a, if you want to think of it as a lease payment for the first few months, and then, and then the permanent purchase or the, the total purchase will be completed later in the year.
So this will be applied to the purchase price?
Correct.
I don't have a problem transferring the money, and I just, I would like to see the lease that seems.
Yeah, and we, we do not have the lease or the paperwork yet, the contract work at this time, so I haven't even asked the finance committee to meet yet to approve this transfer. We want to get, get all the legwork in place, but because the, the finance committee can typically meet on shorter notice than the board, I wanted to take it to the, bring it to the board tonight, get that piece of it done. If it turns out that the, that the contract is not, doesn't say what we, what we expected to say, we'll just, we'll just pull the plug on it and we'll go forward as we were going to anyways.
So you haven't seen the lease or the contract or anything?
That's correct.
Well, this will just go back into the general fund on June 30th, so.
That's right.
I don't have an issue with it. Okay, I would move to approve the municipal relief, relief request in the amount of $30,000. Okay, I would move to approve the municipal release, lease request in the amount of $30,000 to be transferred to Equipment Rental 044225270 from Health Insurance 001099145740.
Second.
We moved and seconded. Any other questions? Colin, did you have anything?
I actually have a question, I didn't realize we were moving it. Why are we moving it to Equipment Rental?
Because it's really going to be a rental for the, for the initial period. But it, expenses all get, it's all, it's all treated from a bottom line anyways.
Second.
All set?
All set.
Andrea?
On the municipal transfers, you're only allowed to do up to 3% of the appropriation. Last week we did, or a week before, a transfer for $30,000, and now this.
Correct.
We're still safe on the 3%?
The, the transfer two weeks ago was from wages, was from highway wages to highway expenses.
Right.
The 3% applies to the, to the transferring account. So, from health insurance, 3% would be from the health insurance account. There's no limit on how much you transfer into a, into a department or into an account, but there's a limit to how much you can take from, from another account.
Okay, I had thought that we were transferring, as we so often do, between the department itself, you can only take so much out of salaries to put into expenses.
Right, so if you're taking from wages in the same department and putting it into expenses, then you are covered by that 3%.
All right, so where is this money coming from?
Health insurance.
So, this money is coming from health insurance.
Oh, I.
The one two weeks ago was, was within the department.
Oh, no, I didn't hear that was from.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
I'm sorry.
The, two weeks ago was within the department, this one is outside the department.
Thank you.
And that was in the motion too, Andrea?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Who else said? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please do so.
Oh, my goodness. 3.6, review request of Unitil Pittsburgh Gas and Electric to cross alter and/or construct within a townway for installation of gas service at 43 Mason Road and 23 Smith Street. That'd be fine.
I would move to approve the application to, for permit to cross alter and/or construct within a townway to install gas service at 43 Mason Street, West Townsend, and 23 Smith Street, Towns of Mass, as approved by Ed Kukula, Highway Superintendent.
Second.
We moved and seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post 6538 for wedding reception to be held on June 14th, 2014, 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
I would move that we approve the one-day liquor license request for Terry Roy to be held at the VFW Post 6538 for a wedding reception to be held on June 14th from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.10, review request for one-day liquor license for Terry Roy and the VFW Post 6538 for wedding reception to be held on June 21st from 2:30 to 6:30.
I would move that we approve the one-day liquor license request for Terry Roy and the VFW Post, at VFW Post 6538 for a wedding reception to be held June 21st, 2014, with serving hours from 2:30 p.m. to 6:30.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's jump here. Oh, there's a second page.
Better page.
I'm trainable.
Can I get that written?
No.
Yeah, we don't think we're, it should feel better.
Yeah, a lot of legal darkness tonight.
Oh, not today.
3:11, continue discussion of future of the Hart Library. Andy?
So, when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that I was going to a meeting the following day to hear about some potential grant opportunities. That was a meeting regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program, the CDBG Program, which is a federal grant program that's been around for 40 years now. It's federal money administered through the states and funneled through the regional planning agencies, so our, in our case, the Monticicup Regional Planning Commission. The CDBG monies are not really applicable to a project like this for the stage that we're at now. They could be down the road if we were to convert the Hart Library to either low-income housing or senior housing. But in terms of feasibility and things like that, the money's not available for that. However, there is a different pot of money that I became aware of at that meeting, and Karen Chapman has done some work digging into that, and that's called the Priority Development Fund. That will pay for things like a feasibility study, so if we wanted to have a, if we wanted to hire consultants to do some architectural renderings, do some estimates on what it would take to remediate asbestos and lead and mold, if there's mold.
Septic system.
Septic system, potentially. Basically, what to do with, with the property. So, that is a possibility. Towns are eligible for up to $15,000. I'm not sure if that would get us, that would probably get us most of what we're, what we're looking for. However, we, you know, we keep coming, we keep having to come back to what do we want to do with the building, and we really should, we should really have a, sort of a sense of, of what our goal is for, for the future of that, of that building. Although we've got some potential sources of funding for, to be used for this project, none of it is really guaranteed. There's not a lot of grant money around now. It really started to dry up even before the Great Recession, hasn't really come back to the levels that it was at, even in, in the mid 2000s. We don't, we don't have an identified need for the building as a municipal building. The size of the lot, proximity to the river, the contours of the lot make it difficult to split off and provide for adequate space for a septic system and parking. The way the building is sort of perched up on the lot is not necessarily conducive to senior housing. There are a lot of steps to get to the, to the main level of the building. It may be okay for affordable, for a couple of affordable units. And you can do, you can get permitted in that zoning district to do up to six units with a special permit from the zoning board, but for every unit, you need two spaces, two parking spaces, and you need, you need a septic system that's going to accommodate those, that number of units or bedrooms, so. So, it, it remains a very difficult piece of land to, to work with. And I, and I keep coming back to, it's sort of, sort of like Mark Twain said, buy land, they're not making any more of it. It's kind of like that in that if we get rid of the building or if we demolish the building, which has been recommended by, by some people around town, we can't go back, we can't undo that, that kind of an action. And so, I guess, at some point, we need to decide what we, what we want to do with the building. And I'm not sure the best way to do that, whether it's a, some sort of a public input session where we try to get people to come out, we know that that's hard to get people to come out, if we want to try to do something through Survey Monkey or something like that to try to gauge the interest of, of the residents, or if we just want to go ahead and, and issue the RFP again to try to find somebody who would lease the building and in the process renovate it. And we could, we had sort of tightened up the RFP when we issued it a year or so ago. And what we did hear from a couple of people that, that had been at least preliminarily interested in it was that it was, it was too cumbersome, too many restrictions.
The issue that I heard was that, you know, who would want to do all of the renovating, you know, the renovation and put all that money into it and still have it owned by the town? You know, I, I think the recommendation that we got was to sell it. So, Colin has his hand up. Colin?
Thank you. That plan feasibility, what you were mentioning, how, what's the timeframe on something like that?
Well, depending in large part on how quickly we can get funding for it.
Yeah.
It's a rolling application process for the funding, so we, you know, we could have funding maybe in place in a couple of months, probably a couple of months to do a feasibility study.
I mean, we, we started talking about this a long time ago.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not trying to rush the process, but we've had plenty of time to think about it. I really strongly feel that we need to look at selling the property.
Carolyn?
Well, as we talked, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, I have a hard time with letting go of the land, although Town Properties has been looking at this for a year, and I respect the work they did. The problem that I have is the residents are being asked to either sell the property or to keep it for town use, but they don't have an idea of the cost it's going to take to rehab the building.
I agree.
So, there's no rush, it's not like it's, you know, going to.
But it's deteriorating, and we need to make a decision.
So, how about, how about this? If the feasibility would give us the answer on exactly what does this building require, that could be, I don't want to say a selling point, but it certainly would be information for whomever might be interested in purchasing it. That we have done that feasibility, that here are the things we know are wrong, and potentially, you know, what would it take to write them? And having, having done that, I, I look at as, you know, it's an investment in selling that piece of property down the road. Now, that having been said, I know, because I'm on the building committee for the high school, that the superintendent is still looking for a home. The district agreement actually says that the administration shall reside in Townsend. That's not happening right now. Administration is now in Pepperell. The Selectmen in Pepperell are letting them stay in, in the, the school. But I'm looking at that piece of land and I'm, I mean, that property, and I'm saying, gee, that might be something that the school department would be interested in. In terms of, of parking, maybe it's, you know, i- if that could get worked out with the school is what I'm suggesting, and I have not talked to, you know, to Superintendent Landers or anybody about that, I just happened to be thinking about it when you were saying, what, what would we use that for? And it's such a beautiful building, I think it would lend itself to that kind of an administrative office.
It's not a bad idea.
It, it's just, it's a thought, okay? But I, I guess I'm kind of maybe thinking what Carolyn is. Let's see if we can do that feasibility study, especially if it's not going to take more than a few months.
Mm-hmm.
Things been sitting there for so long anyway, might as well figure it out.
And it's town meeting, if we do decide to go forward and sell it like Town Properties has recommended, we can use that as a selling, you know, explain why we made this decision.
Exactly.
Because it's going to cost us this month to fix it, and then the people have the choice.
Well, on the other hand, though, I don't think it would necessarily cost us to fix it. It would cost someone to fix it. Andrea?
When you listed the things that were wrong, would that then lower the value of the building, make it more affordable to someone who, you know, would be willing to make the improvement?
Well, I, I think what I was thinking about was if you go into it knowing this is what it's going to take to renovate it, it's a little bit better than the Property Brothers.
Oh, right, but it was no value, aye. Plus, you had all these huge expenses, then your chances of getting a bite are extremely small, where if, because I know when you sell a house now, if it doesn't be Title V, you have to give up about $30,000 for the septic system on the valuation.
Right.
Right.
I would think that that would be something you could consider as well.
But at least that way, we would have the information and be able to say, you know, given this, given that, we talked to the school, we, you know, we, we've done due diligence, and we've at least done, had that analysis done. And if we can get grant money to do that, I think that's wonderful. So, could you, this is the board?
That's fine, let me, it looked like he has him.
Did you have a question?
It was me.
Yeah.
I'm sort of a history buff in a way. This town has a lot of history, goes back to early, well, mid to early 1700s. It was also part of, of the history going through, late 1800s when the Civil War was going on and whatever, this was in Townsend, it's called Townsend Harbor. It's not called Townsend Harbor because it's, it's got a seafront property. It's Townsend Harbor because it's part of the business of running the slaves up through and getting them to safe haven, happened to be in Canada, I guess. But a building like that with the character it has, and I realize it's got a lot of stuff wrong with it, I have absolutely no clue about what it would take to do something. But if that was turned into a small museum with all the history of the town and of this area here, would it not draw some people in, you know, and there's a small, and the school, the school could be, the school kids could come through there and get a, get a flavor from what the town was at one time, or what the area was at one time. I mean, I just think out loud, never mind.
We'll see how much those to cost.
I, I mean, I, I think that, I think that's, you know, that's a viable suggestion, very viable suggestion. And I think going forward with, see if we can get the grant, do the feasibility, find out exactly what it's going to take, because we've heard all kinds of numbers bounced around. You know, it'll cost, you know, a million and a half dollars to be able to do this, and I, I want to know, you know, I want to know. So, if we can get a grant to tell us that, I think it's worth that.
And then I guess the question I would ask following that would be, if, if the direction was to turn that into a kind of museum, is there grant money from the state to do stuff like that?
Well, it sounds like, you know, you're. Well, it sounds like, you know, you're really interested in that. Maybe you could help us investigate that.
I don't have the camera anymore, I can't be sweeping out the ground somewhere, because the other half got loose.
You stepped too far, Ed.
I know, sorry, sorry. But it would be fun.
Yeah, like I said, there's not as much grant money now as there used to be.
Yeah.
Sometimes you can find, you know, little pockets of, of seed money. There are a few towns that have local museums. One that I can think of is, is the town of Westford, they have the so-called Westford Museum, it's in, I believe it's in their first high school. And I think it's run by a non, either a nonprofit, or the local historic society, or something like that. So, you know, there may be, there may be something, you know, possible. I think a lot of it would depend on what feasibility study shows. If, you know, if it's not as expensive as we kind of assume it's going to be, maybe a group like that could take it over. There's also a, a regional entity called the, the Freedom, Freedom Way? Freedom of the Way Association, or, it, it, basically, it goes back to the revolution, and, and sort of covers all of the area that, that was part of the revolution in, in Massachusetts and in New England, stretches up into, up into New Hampshire, but all the way out here, and, and a little bit beyond. So maybe Freedom's Way is something that we could, we could also reach out to. I think there's, I think there's some, some options. I think they're all going to be hard, it's going to take a lot of work, but I think there are options.
Okay, so Andy, I'd like to move on. So what, do you need a, a motion from the board?
Yeah, I think just a motion to, to direct me to apply for funding for feasibility.
Okay.
We'll move that we request the town administrator, apply for funding for feasibility study on the library.
Second.
Okay, they moved and seconded, any questions?
Uh-uh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 312, discuss summer meeting schedule. I saw that, and I laughed, because...
You're thinking none.
No, I'm thinking I have my little flip phone.
So I did put a, a calendar in front of you tonight.
I did not see that. Where is your calendar?
In the, in the package of stuff that, the new stuff that was in front of you tonight.
I, um, I haven't ironed out when my vacation is going to be, yet.
We'll do that for you.
For the summer. And I prefer, if we could table this till the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
I don't know, either one of you...
There's no great, there's no great rush.
I just don't know when I'm taking my vacation yet.
I would move to table agenda item 3.12 to the next meeting.
Second.
I would just like to add, if, if, if prior to the next meeting, any of us have information that we just funnel it into Mr. Shan, and, then maybe he can use that, okay?
Okay.
Yep.
So moved and seconded to...
What?
Postpone, what did we say?
Yeah, we'll just put it out to the next agenda table.
I should know by then.
You don't need a vote on that, do you?
No.
All right. Council on Aging, Senior Center Director, continue discussion for recruiting a successor. How'd you make out, Andy?
Well, I put a, I made out sort of 50/50. Put a memo in the, in your packets. There was a discussion at the last meeting about the, the size of the screening committee, and whether there should be either a, a selectman on there, or additional at-large residents not as, not affiliated with the, with the senior center or council on aging. I think if you want to, there's a, I mean, there's a sort of chicken and egg thing here, depends on how you want the, the selection to proceed. If you want the, if you want the committee, the screening committee, to provide the board with one, one name, basically preferred candidate, then it probably makes sense for the board to be represented on the committee. If you want the committee to, to bring forth a couple of names, three names, or something like that, then it probably makes sense for the board not to be represented on the committee, because you'd be getting the, sort of the last bite of, of the apple.
So the Council on Aging does want a screening committee?
Yeah, and they want to be, they want to be part of it.
Okay.
Both the Friends of Townsend Seniors, and the, and the Council on Aging, and Ed is here, although we thought he was here to talk about the library, I think he's really here to talk about this.
Ed?
We have a, a committee that we put, that we have put together, and I'll just read off the names. Myself, Valerie Adams as vice chair, Dave Prophet, Russ Moore, that's from, he's from the Friends of the Seniors, Stacy Shutler, and she is a librarian, okay? And then Sharon, can you pronounce it?
I don't know, but she must be a lead.
Mercurio, she's a, she's a council on aging director.
So she would be the person that is not connected with either of us, you know, either the Friends or the Council. And one thought was to bring forth three candidates, out of whatever the field is. We would narrow the field down to 10, and down to six. When we get down to six, we would actually interview all six candidates. And out of that six, we would take three, and we could present, present to you, with one being the shining star, and then the next two follow-ups. It would give you the chance to look through. Now, as I understand it, all the resumes are going to go to Ed.
Right.
We have a deadline of the 25th?
Twenty-fifth, yeah. We've already posted and advertised, and we have a deadline of the 25th of June.
So I guess I'm, I'm here to ask, you know, what do you think of, of that idea?
I think it's a good idea. I, as, if, as long as there are a selection of finalists, I don't, as, as long, but if, my only point I made at the last meeting was if there was only one person going to be, one finalist going to be brought forward, I just wanted, wanted the three of us to be represented on the committee. But if there's three finalists, then...
True.
I support whatever the Council on Aging wants, that's what, you know, said.
That's what we came, we came to.
That's what you've decided that's...
That we came to, and we were just here to say, this is what we'd like to do. So when Andy gets all the applications, and he can forward them to us, and then we'll have our go-through mall recommendations.
Sounds fine.
Okay.
We're okay with that.
Okay.
Go ahead with that.
And then, I don't know, I know you didn't mention this, but then, Andy, you'd also be a, a non-voting member?
Correct.
That's fine, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. 314.
Rest up, Ed, you're going to be busy.
We get correspondence from Monmouth Regional Planning Commission, MRPC.
So MRPC is looking for a, for an alternate member. It has been Lori Schifrin for a number of years. I really just put this on so that we could, could make it as an announcement to get the, the word out, get the interest out there. We will be doing our annual appointments at the next meeting, and if the board would like, we can just include it as, as part of our annual appointments at the next meeting.
Okay. Put it on our website, maybe?
Uh, yes, yep, put it on there as well.
Good night.
Night.
Bye. Look into those grants now.
So anyone interesting is serving, is our ultimately, he's on?
Okay. So are we...
So the, the alternate can be a member of the board, or it can be a non-member, but the alternate is appointed by the board. So we'll put that on the website, and, and include that as part of, of the annual appointments. I don't know that Lori is not interested in, in serving, continuing to serve, so we would certainly make her aware of it as well.
Okay, great. So we're all set on that one? We did 315, 316, announced military band concert scheduled for 2014.
Would you like me to do it, since you've had to read many long ones?
Yes, me too.
The Townsend Military Band will open its 2014 Thursday evening concert series on the Townsend Common on June 5th. Weather permitting, the band will play a concert from the bandstand on the Common each Thursday between 7:30 and 9:30, through at least August 14th, with the exception of July 24th. The Townsend Military Band is connected, conducted by Dr. John Nicholson of Winchington, and managed by Betty May Tenny of Townsend. Nine of the concerts are funded by the town Townsend, and the 10th concert is funded by the Amanda E. Dwight Entertainment Fund. Lawn parties hosted by local organizations will feature food, activities for children, and other assorted tables are held in conjunction with these concerts. Local organizations interested in hosting, or sharing a lawn party at the 2014 Townsend Military Band Concert, should contact Townsend Band Concert Coordinator Betty May Tenny at 978-597-6495. Townsend Scout Groups will be hosting a lawn party on June, at the June 5th band concert. Boy Scout Troop Number 10 will be selling grilled hot dogs, hamburgers, Italian sausages, hot coffee, and cold bottled water, and assorted flavors of soda. Boy Scout Troop Number 81 will be offering fried dough, french fries, and popcorn for sale. The Squana Cook Girl Scouts will be doing face painting, and have a decorate-your-own cupcake concession. Oh, wow, I'll be there. The CoEd Venture Crew 30 will be operating a soda bottle ring toss game. Cub Pack 11 will have a bounce house, I'll be there as well, and several games, including sponge toss, bottle toss, ring toss, basketball toss, and a fishing pond set up on the Common for the enjoyment of children at the concert. They will also have a bake sale. The Townsend Military Band will open its June 5th concert, programmed by playing Bugler's Dream by Arnaud, and America Sousa's Freelance March, the Irish tune Danny Boy, arranged by Granger. Handel's Water Music Suite and Elsa's Procession to the Cathedral by Wagner will be performed. Rossini's Overture to Italian Girl in Algiers, Osterling's, I can't even pronounce that word, Beguine for flutes. Themes like Old Times, arranged by Barker, and Belgian paratroopers will be included in the first portion of the concert. The Sea Songs March by Vaughan Williams and Mozart's The Fake Gardeness Overture will be played following intermission. Yee Banks and Braze of Bonnie Dune, arranged by Granger. Great themes from Italian movies arranged by Cacavus, and America the Beautiful will be performed before the Townsend Military Band concludes its program at 9:30 by playing the Star Spangled Banner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Summer is, is here.
Summer, you always know summer's here when the band concerts start.
We've got one cupcake and two sausages on the menu.
That sounds so good.
And hopefully the bouncy house is rated for my weight.
We'll have to call and make sure. Okay, 317, review request from Ed Kukla, Highway Superintendent, to extend material bid contracts for FY15.
So this was the item that was, that was added at the beginning of the night. Ed went out to bid two years ago for, for materials, and it's a one, one-year contract with option to extend two more one-year periods. We extended last year, and he would like to extend again this year. This is for reclamation, cracked ceiling, washed stand, and asphalt in place.
You have any questions?
Nope.
I would approve to, I would move to approve the contract extension request by Ed Kukla, Highway Superintendent, for the material bids for FY15 as attached. Would you want me to bring them?
No. Second.
Do, do you need her?
No.
Okay. Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We added 318. I'd just like to take a minute to review the letter, Carolyn, that you copied us on.
Sure.
This is a letter that was sent to Couplman and Page, our attorneys, regarding a capital planning legal opinion. I have a couple of questions, concerns. One is typically, when we're looking for an opinion from town council, that's a decision the board makes.
Okay.
Not a selectman by themselves. And I, when I saw it, I looked, and you've signed that, Carolyn Smart, clerk of the Board of Selectmen. One of my concerns is that, that makes it appear as though it's coming from the board, which it is not.
Well, I'm not asking for a new opinion, I'm asking for a copy of the opinion he must have issued, that is different form what we have on file.
Well, actually, in your last paragraph, you're saying, "I was hoping you could provide me with the reversal of decisions made by you or your office for consideration."
Yeah, exactly. That's what, that's what Attorney General's Office suggested I do, get a copy of...
Okay, let's, let's talk about that a little bit, okay? So, so number one, just to understand going forward, how, how we need to work. And that is, if correspondence such as this is going to town council, it's something that we should talk about as a board, okay? Because none of us are board members unless we are meeting as a board, okay? If you want to do something to the board, from you personally, that, that would be another, another issue, okay, or another subject. But I'm also concerned, because you signed it as from the Board of Selectmen, yet, for proper disclosure purposes, I did contact the Attorney General and the Municipal Finance Department at the Division of Local Services. Before deciding to utilize the procedure outlined in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 53, or any other option available by way of complaint to the appropriate agencies, I was hoping you could provide me. What that says to me is that the letters coming from you, and you're potentially talking, and actually have talked with the Attorney General and Municipal Finance Department about potentially taking us to court, you would in essence be taking yourself to court. Okay, so I, 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 hear me out, okay? And, and, and that really is why I take exception to this letter going out. Now, if you wanted to personally write a letter, and you wanted to go forward with any kind of a lawsuit, or whatever, you, you of course have every right to do so, but not attach to the, to the board.
I am a member of the board.
You are a member of the board when we meet as a board.
Even if we don't, even if I'm not, if even if we're not in a meeting, I'm still a Board of Selectmen member, I go to meetings and collect data, I talk to people, I'm still a selectman. If you have...
You may not act as a selectman.
No, you cannot act outside of a meeting, that's, I'm asking for information. I'm not acting outside of a meeting.
So my concern is why, why you didn't come to us and say, "I want this in writing."
Well, I, I tried at the last meeting, and we didn't want to talk about it.
You did not request anything in writing.
Well, I said, "I talked to Attorney General," is what I said.
I consider that to be more than a veiled threat, to tell you the truth.
Oh, certainly not a threat, I'm just exploring, exploring what is right. If I feel something's done illegally, I took an open office to uphold the laws of this town and the Commonwealth, so if I feel something's not right, I need the information to either A, make the decision that I'm wrong, and it is okay, or B, that it is wrong, and how do we go about fixing it? So this is an information, I'm assuming that there must have been a different legal opinion issued, because it's opposite, maybe I was assuming wrong.
Well, that's very similar to what was asked for a while ago, when Kay Doyle came back and said, we have, you know, somebody was saying... you know, somebody was saying, and I think it came from Capitol, that I've opined and contradicted myself. And she opined about that contradiction. Exactly, so now we have another situation where that same thing is happening. I take exception to you're doing this as a board member outside of this board.
I'm sorry, I take exception.
Well, I really take exception to it, to the point that, I mean, it says on our website, "Members of the Board of Selectmen should be aware of the fact that they, as well as all other members of elected or appointed boards, may act in their official capacity only when in an open public meeting with a majority of the board present or when specifically delegated by a majority of the board." Now, the reason I'm reading that is because I get things read to me all the time. Okay, so that being said, well, at this point, I would assume that since that letter went out, the attorney will be getting back to us. You had a comment?
Yes, I have a comment. I think just the, I mean, absolutely fine to send that letter. It's just the, when I read that and if I didn't know the situation, you signing it with your title, just to me, somebody could think it does come from the board.
That's fine.
That's the only comment I have on it.
In the future, if I ever ask information, I won't.
But the other thing, I have a question about Andy is so, what this whole thing is about, you know, this information relating to the capital plan and Town Council vetted it, they approved it, they signed off on it, then, and they said it's perfectly legal what Town Meeting did.
Correct.
So, I mean, I've...
He should just send us the legal opinion, maybe that's...
Then I have no...
There is no legal opinion.
I'm sorry?
There was no legal opinion, okay? To have a legal opinion that's in writing. We only request opinions in writing when we absolutely have to because those cost us money, which is why you need to come to the board and the board needs to agree that yes, we want to expend that money. Okay? And what you've done is you've gone directly to the attorney and asked him for a legal opinion and without the authority to pay for that.
So he never issued you any type of full legal opinion or anything to say that his opinion is now different?
I'm not aware that his opinion is any different. We've had a number of opinions over the years on the capital plan.
Yeah, and they're all included, they're all included in that package.
I understand, but all you really need to do is read the bylaw and look at your capital plan.
I agree completely.
Because it says in Section E, "Each year, sixty days prior to the annual Town Meeting, the Capital Planning Committee shall submit the capital improvement plan to the Board of Selectmen as the recommended capital budget." This document here that came from the Capital Planning Committee is the Capital Improvement Plan. It has seventeen and a half million dollars on it. Every one of the projects on that list, or I should say, every one of the projects on the Article 23 at Town Meeting is on that list. That is the Capital Improvement Plan that was submitted to the board.
I don't have a copy of that letter with me. Oh, actually, I might. Why don't we read it into the record?
It's in the record.
We'll read the letter, I'm sorry, Sue, I'm gonna bring it.
It's all in the record.
No, she's saying her letter.
The letter's in the record, it's part of the package.
The letter that she wrote to the attorney.
Do you mind if I, or you can...
Regarding Town of Townsend Capital Planning Legal Opinion, Dear Attorney Riley, I'm writing to inquire about a recent ruling regarding Article 23 as amended and unanimously voted at the annual Town Meeting held on May 6, 2014 in the Town of Townsend. Specifically, I question the legality of the appropriation for projects not yet reviewed by the Capital Planning Committee in an email addressed to the Town Administrator and as attached for your review. While the authority of the Board of Selectmen to finalize the capital budget is not in question, the ability to add projects to the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, or capital budget that have not been reviewed in accordance with our bylaw is in question. Specifically, Section D of Chapter 14-1, "The committee shall consider the relative need, impact, timing, and cost of proposed capital expenditures and the effect each one will have on the financial position of the town. In evaluating and scheduling the request, the committee will consider the following criteria: One, risks to public safety or health; Two, deterioration of town facilities; Three, coordination with other capital requests; Four, requirement of state or federal law or regulation; Five, improvement of operating efficiency; Six, systematic replacement; Seven, equitable provision of services and facilities; Eight, protection and conservation of resource." By way of background, to comply with this section of the bylaw, the Capital Planning Committee developed Policy Number 01-11, "Criteria used to evaluate requests for capital purchases" under Section 4 of the enclosed policies. Several of the capital expenses that were approved at Town Meeting were not reviewed by the Capital Planning Committee as required by the bylaw and correlating policy. Further, under Section B of Chapter 14-1, the bylaw outlines the recommended capital budget is for the upcoming fiscal year, while the capital program is for future years. The capital budget submitted to Town Meeting included future year requests, as argued and noted, that were not reviewed nor recommended by the Capital Planning Committee, see attached report. As noted in three separate legal opinions received from Attorney Kay Doyle and as attached, no appropriation may be considered by Town Meeting unless the proposed improvements are considered in the Capital Planning Committee's report or the Board of Selectmen determine it to be of emergency nature. The expenditures in question meet neither of these criteria. Excuse me. I was informed by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen at our meeting held on May 20, 2014, that you reviewed this warrant article and approved of the content. Further, Ms. Lysio was quoted in the local newspaper. If there was something glaring about this whole process that was illegal, I would hope that our professional attorneys would have figured that out. For proper disclosure purposes, I did contact the Attorney General and the Municipal Finance Department at the Division of Local Services before deciding to utilize the procedure outlined in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 53, or any other option available by way of complaint to the appropriate agencies. I was hoping you could provide me with the reversal of decisions made by you or your office for consideration. I can only assume that a newly issued legal opinion was received to justify the actions taken by the Board of Selectmen in relation to the capital improvement budget. I would personally appreciate your prompt response to this inquiry. Thank you respectfully, yours, Carolyn Smart, clerk for the Board of Selectmen. She copied Kim Fails, Kate Stacy, interim treasurer Kathy Spofford, Colin McNabb, Sullisio, Townsend Finance Committee and Capital Planning Committee. Now, I would like to go back to something here because it says, "Several of the capital expenditures that were approved at Town Meeting were not reviewed by the Capital Planning Committee as required by the bylaw." Only when we met and we had folks here from Capital Planning, nobody said, gee, we gave you this plan and it includes five years' worth, but don't pay any attention to it because we didn't really review it. We just stuck it on there.
Well, if you read the bylaws, Sue, we have to review the upcoming fiscal year. We can't review because the prices change, think of it that way. If we're trying to review something in two years on cost and things like that, the cost is going to change. We're not going to make our department heads go out and get us exact costs for future year projects. Unless you came to us and you said, you know, we're thinking of doing a borrowing, could you look at future year strategic or something like that?
We did, we did. You were sitting in this very room. You were sitting in this very room.
It's actually on YouTube, I just watched it recently.
I don't want to discuss it anymore because we just keep going around in circles.
Yeah, I thought this was going to be put up, but I wanted you guys to have a...
But I want, I want, I want you to know that I really, I read it the same way that Colin said. It appears as though this is coming from you as a representative of our board, and it is not. It is not. It is from you yourself. I think you overstepped your authority in putting your name as a Board of Selectmen clerk on this letter, especially with the not really veiled threat about going to the Attorney General, et cetera. So...
I don't consider that a threat. I'm just trying to find out if this is legal. There's a big difference.
Andy?
Do you want to let her finish?
It's fine that you feel insulted by that, but I did it openly. I sent everybody's copies of it.
You're not getting, you're not understanding me correctly. I'm not making myself clear, apparently. I'm not offended by it. I'm appalled by it because it goes against what a Board of Selectmen member should be doing.
Well, that's funny, Sue, because I've received a lot of emails from you in the past few years where you see Town Council and things all the time. But I can respect that anytime we want a legal opinion, you would like to discuss it as a board. I can understand that. I was just asking for a copy of a legal opinion that must already exist. There's a difference.
We don't get a legal opinion every time we do a warrant.
So did he...
We give them the articles, they review the articles. There have been times when they have come back and asked for changes in wording, and we have done so. It's part...
Oh, so you're saying there's no reversal of legal opinion available? Or no legal opinion on this at all, except the three that we've received on the capital plan?
As far as I know, I don't have anything in writing.
So should I be asking you guys if we could get one then?
Why?
Another one on top of the three we've already paid for?
Well, the three that we've already paid for agree with what I'm saying.
So I'm looking for the legal opinion that supports your position.
Well, I think...
You know, it's a plan. It's a document. It's a whole document that says it is the capital plan. If those things were listed in that document, it is my assumption, my belief, that the committee did what they needed to do and talked about that. And when they split an expenditure for carpeting into two years, I assume they've talked about the fact that they're splitting that into two years.
That was at the suggestion of Chief Marshall, that was his request.
I'm using that as an example.
I understand that. But again, like I said two weeks ago...
We have asked several times, what is it on that list? And this goes back to prior to Town Meeting. Carolyn, what is it on that list that you want us to take off? What would you like us to change? And you did not answer.
I did answer, you're missing the point. It's not up to one person on a committee to change something or to take it off. We would need to go to the department heads to have them fill out the form, to ask them. It is their request that we're reviewing. So I wouldn't be able to say, "Ms. Lysio, I'd like to take off this, this, and this." That wouldn't be appropriate.
All right, I don't want to, I don't want to talk about it anymore now.
Can I just make one more comment? Andy, again, and I've brought this up, I think this is the third meeting, third time we've had this discussion. In this whole process, you had consulted the department heads, correct? I'm assuming that they were tickled pink, that they were going to get projects that they otherwise, or items that they otherwise were not going to get. It was approved by the Finance Committee and overwhelmingly supported at Town Meeting.
Correct. The opportunity, there's a couple of things if I can talk about. We've talked about the bylaw.
And we've talked about it potentially needing to change it.
Right, and this is another, this brings up another example of the poor wording in the bylaw that needs to be addressed. Not blaming anybody for it, I read it, I think it's pretty clear. However, it's certainly not clear to Carolyn. So I guess we have to...
Mr. Sheehan, that's crossing the line there.
No, I don't think it is.
This bylaw is very clear to me.
It's not, it's not clear because it alternates...
We have a difference of opinions.
It alternates terms and in your letter, you pick and choose the terms and the sections that you want to highlight that will support your argument. Now, if you want to, no, as far as Town Meeting goes, you should have objected more strenuously at Town Meeting. Town Meeting approved it overwhelmingly. I think in your letter, you say that it was approved unanimously.
Yes, it is, it was.
So you voted in favor of it apparently than at Town Meeting.
No, I guess unanimously is more than a majority.
No, unanimous means everybody.
Okay, so...
I'll use some word in my letter, Mr. Sheehan, let's move past this.
I don't want the back and forth.
Well, the only other thing I think needs to be mentioned is that it is not a veiled threat of litigation. Chapter 40, Section 53, you know what it says.
I didn't hear you.
I said, "This is not a veiled threat of litigation." It is a threat of litigation.
I said, "The procedure's outlined in Chapter 53."
Right, which is...
That's where you have ten taxpayers sign and the judge decides. It's not a lawsuit, the judge decides.
It's litigation.
Okay, so...
Call it what it is, you know?
It is.
And if, you know, I'm sorry that you don't like the fact that we're trying to accomplish things...
Why don't we solve this by having Town Council give me his revised opinion and I can review it before I decide whether I'd want to spend taxpayers' funds to do that?
Why don't you...
Hold on, hold on, hold on one second.
Both office to up the law.
Taxpayers' funds to do what?
To defend her lawsuit.
Not to defend my lawsuit, but to even file out as the procedure is allowed in the Mass. General Law. Because that ultimately costs taxpayers money, which I would not want to do.
Okay, so the point is though, if, if people decide, and you would decide that you wanted to sign that complaint, that petition complaint, I hope you realize that that same group is going to have to come up with the funds to hire an attorney to represent them. The town is not going to represent...
Oh, I understand that.
The suit on that side.
They don't even have to have an attorney, they sign a petition and Superior Court will review it.
Okay, well...
It's a ten taxpayer petition. That's one avenue. There were several others that we've discussed, but before going any further...
Well, the letter, the letter has gone out. I am not sure it's going to be a reversal because I don't, I really don't understand what you're looking for. I think that I wouldn't be surprised if the attorney came back and said, "You know what? You've got a lot of ambiguity in the way that your capital plan bylaw is written and you need to clean it up," which is what we've been talking about for several weeks now. So...
I disagree with that because the same Town Council's approved of it and you can go to DOR, I know you said it's not the same. You can go to the DOR website right now, type in "capital planning bylaw", and almost that bylaw verbatim will pop up, except the changes the Board of Selectmen made. So...
Can I make a suggestion, Sue?
Sure.
I will forward the email that I received from Town Council to the members that he sent after reviewing the warrant and the motions. I recall how specific it was to this article. We talked about trying to do something with the bylaw after cooling off period. It certainly doesn't lend itself to a cooling off period if we're going to continue to threaten litigation against each other. But maybe, you know, maybe over the coming months, we can... Maybe we just agree to disagree, I don't know.
I mean, I think there's a way to resolve it. And I think it's, all right, what's your intent? This is very much like what we just looked at when we talked about a change for SuFanioli. It's the same thing, well, what was the intent? And Carolyn explained what the intent was. Well, that's not what I read, okay? So it's a matter of wording things to... Okay, so, it's a matter of wording things to match what your intent is, so that it loses its ambiguity. Okay?
Right.
It, it develops more clarity, and it's obvious that it needs to be more clear, so that there is no double interpretation, or two different interpretations are not possible. So, you know, that, that's my hope, and that's what we talked about the last time, and I was surprised to see that it was still going on. But if you could at least forward what you have gotten for, for now, my understanding is that, that Brian is away.
Correct.
Right, okay. The other thing, so anyway, that, I think we're done with that. Appointments personnel, we have none. Board of Selectmen updates and reports. I have one item. Carolyn, I'm going to pass this down to you. This is an invitation from the MMA to new selectmen.
I've had it sent.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay, are, are you going to be able to attend? It's this Saturday.
I'm supposed to be going to the, going away this weekend, but I haven't sent in the application until I find out for sure, but I was thinking of it.
Okay, I mean, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, I actually went with somebody years ago to one of these, and we just went to the one of the-
Ethics laws, all kinds of things have changed, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Colin, it's not just for new selectmen, it's for, did you get to it last time?
I didn't get to that one, I did do a, I did do a training.
You can go to, if you want to.
Did you say town council came down and worked on it?
Town council also offers it. MMA, I, I, what I feel is good about the, the court, the stuff that they do is, there's a whole bunch of other people there that are really peers, it's not just a little tiny group.
It's a good bond.
So, you know, you get to meet people from other communities and, and-
I like the trainees in MMA, usually, frankly.
Okay, so-
Town Administrator Updates and Report, oh, do we have anything else? Yeah, I had a couple. I saw the letter, and I wanted to thank Colin and Andy, reaching out to the Harbor Investment Group, like we had talked about last time, that was really well-written, I thought it was nice. I'm going to be, I'm going to be going to the Energy Committee meeting next Monday, I know we had briefly discussed that, to see if they have any suggestions I can bring back to this board on how we can better support energy, you know, reducing our energy costs and meet with our, our green community status. I believe we only have one year left.
I'd, I'd almost prefer, I, I would prefer that they come here and that we talk together as a board.
Oh, absolutely, but I just wanted to let you know that I'm, I'm just going to go to the meeting and bring back any information from that, I don't know what it is we can do, but I am, I do have a lot of concerns.
I don't have a problem with you going to the meeting, you can certainly go to any meeting you want to, we go to meetings all the time. What I'm suggesting, though, is that we act as a board, and it's not like you're a member of, of that committee as a representative that's been appointed from the board.
I didn't even infringe that it was, I go and collect data and then bring it back, that's kind of what we do.
What I'm saying, Carolyn, and I, I'm having a hard time saying it, I don't want to hear it from you. Okay? I want to hear it from them.
Well, I have some ideas on how the, the Selectmen can, can-
Certainly, if you want to, if you want to-
Do some energy consumption ideas, and that kind of thing.
Certainly, if you want to talk with them and, and get schooled in where they're at, and what they've got going on, that makes an awful lot of sense, and I'm sure that they would welcome your input as well.
So, also, the last time we met, I talked about, and I thought it was going to be on the agenda, which is probably a good thing it's not, because the agenda was full, but the Sustainability Committee and Revenue Committee, we were going to have a work session and talk about that. Do you want to push that off until we schedule our, our meetings over the summer for some work sessions?
I was just about to suggest that.
Yeah, okay.
Why don't we, because we-
We're just coming off-
We're just coming off, and it's the, we tend to, you know, have a little bit more of a gap in the-
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just didn't want to, and then, Pipeline Update here, we have Saturday, June 21st, at 10:30 a.m. at the Meeting Hall, 12 Dudley Road. Representatives from the Berkshire Environmental Action Team and No Frack Gas and Mask will discuss the pipeline proposal fracking and similar topics, so I'm one of-
There's also a meeting this Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're going to be sending a mailing out, yes, Thursday, June 5th, I'm sorry, I shared the top, at 6:30 at the Meeting Hall, 12 Dudley Road. Nishoba Conservation Trust will be coming to share their knowledge on the proposal.
And my, my understanding is that, that Nishoba Conservation Trust does a, a really nice job. I think that, um-
Leslie?
Yeah, was it June?
No, not Leslie.
Emily.
Willard, Emily, Emily Horton is going to probably be there as well, from the Friends of Willard Brook.
Yeah.
When are we going to be, is, is that, did Leslie shore up that date for the high school to have a meeting with?
We're trying, we're trying to nail that down.
Wasn't it around 21st?
Around the 25th, I think it was.
25th, okay.
But, um-
But that will be a meeting of our board with-
Kinder Morgan.
With Kinder Morgan, right?
Yeah.
Okay. These are informational meetings.
Yeah.
And the other thing, the Board of Health just asked me, or one of us, to bring up that July 1st, we'll be changing, we'll be going down to 64 gallons, two bags. And there's going to be a mailing going out to everyone that'll explain that, but just an FYI, and it does look, there are overflow bags at a cost of $2 per bag, and they can be bought at Hannaford's, Apple Metal Hardware, McNabb Pharmacy, and the-
Really?
Yeah, Red Brick Store, I'm thinking she meant Old Brick Store.
Yeah, probably.
When I talked to Carlos, she, she said that wasn't quite ready yet, but-
Okay, but on July 1st, as I understand.
Yeah, the new, the new limit's going to affect on July 1.
Yeah, this does not take effect till July.
Colin, did you have anything?
No. Oh, I did have one thing, sorry. I just wanted to give my condolences to the family of Andrew Gustafson. His wake is actually tonight, his funeral's going to be tomorrow. Andy was a great guy, and he will be missed. So my thoughts and prayers go out to his family.
Andy?
Just a couple of quick items. For the board's knowledge, with Beth Ann Scheid, our town collector, has sent out notices to people who are behind, some of the people that are behind on their taxes, and people that are further behind, going back to fiscal year 2011. So, we hope to see some, some uptick in the collections there. We're going to be accelerating our, our collection efforts over the next year or so to try to get more current than, than we've been. Historically, we've let things slide about three years, and that's really a little longer than we should be.
As I understand, Andy, that the Collector's Office will work with-
Yeah.
The taxpayers to try and make payment plans and things to try and catch them up on their taxes.
That's correct.
Okay, wonderful.
And Devon's Household Hazardous Products Collection Center will be open tomorrow. I think we're going to get some rain tomorrow, so check before you go, or call before you go over there, open from 9 to noon, and then they're open again on Saturday, also from 9 to noon, and long-term forecast for the weekend looks pretty good, so they should be open that day. Open every, twice a month until December. That's it.
We meet?
Oh, yeah. One, one last item, thank you, Karen. Cheryl Simonow, our payroll clerk, is, today is her 20th anniversary working for the town, and as a sort of personal celebration, she's decided that she's going to retire and take advantage of the next phase of her life. So we wish her well.
For her.
We thank her for all her years of service, she'll be finishing up later this week, or Monday? Next week. So, if you're, if you're in Town Hall and you have a chance to stop in and say hi to Cheryl, and wish her well, please do so.
I thought you were going to say, if you're in Town Hall and you see this woman-
Three feet off the ground?
Yes. Happily running from, to-
Happiest person in Town Hall. So our best goes out to, to her for all her years of service.
Any thanks.
And she was also a library trustee for a long time, so she's, she's given a lot of her time to the town.
Okay, 5.3.
I would move that review and sign the payroll and bills payable warrant outside of session.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
9:20.
During the 9:20?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, folks.
Good night, folks.